All right, it is five till seven on Monday, August 25th. It's Billy Crone at Marion City Hall getting ready for a city council meeting. See you around Marion.
Well, how about another gallon or they call them.
At G I S. The the amount that the general budget says.
What did you say? There's a few years. I used to come right here before.
Yes.
Yeah, I see a couple of signs.
You have my seat?
Thank you.
No, I do know Bob. I've known him for many years.
I disagree on.
You might have different ideas. Oh, listen.
Okay, we're heading to the line speed order. If they will please stand pleasantly.
Ladies and gentlemen, I am the governor of the United States of America and the citizens of Maryland, which extends one nation under our umbrella, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You will call now the clerk.
Mayor Page.
Here.
Councilmember Chavella.
Here.
Councilmember Coesmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Hams.
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Here.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder. Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And next item up is public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that we will be making public comments within the five minutes. And courts will look over the rules of procedure. The city reserves right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or cloying. I had a sign up here, which had a name, but that cost us, I'm assuming, in July. But that does not clearly match the coming forward for public comments. If you'd like to come forward, please come forward to your name and address. Lloydberry.
Good evening, Councilman, this is Billy Crone, 663 West Street. Firstly, my neighbors in Quail Creek and Milburn West have been asking about the 7-Eleven property that burned down earlier this year. It sounds like the owner is not very motivated to rebuild quickly. Our neighbors are done looking at half missing gas stations surrounded by a blackened fence. I've been hoping to hear movement on this in the planning division meetings that I also sit there and listen to, but nothing has thus far come up. Neighbors who have spoken with me either wondered if another small convenience store or a blank green space of some sort, perhaps a passive park without parking that would bring more traffic to the area. Marion traffic, of course, has been ruinous in both Antioch and Shining Mission since you gave over 60 million of our tax dollars away at the Marion Grand Station and Grand Station Marketplace. The upcoming bigger Joes and more cars residing in Marion and the north apartments as well won't make it any better. My neighbors in Quail Creek and West Milburn deserve better. Secondly, our codes department enforces 10 inches of grass height on residents of fines and court dates, so I'm going to knock out a property owner that's badly in violation tonight. 6300 Carter Avenue has gone to that morning for weeks, and the weeds are now over five feet high. And I took an example, too. I just didn't bring it tonight. And the owner of 6300 Carter is you. It is Chaplain Park. So I reported this last week. It's still on notice of this morning. It's not very fair to my neighbors that our current administration isn't taking care of the city's own lawns, but they expect the issue of fines and fees to residents for much less. My neighbors in Ward Four and all those who use our parks and trail system deserve better, Bob. Thirdly, Water One has another leak that is eroding our streets on Antioch now at the intersection of 67th Street and has been eating away for several weeks. I'll share a video with Celia, but responsible city administration must include proactive maintenance and franchise agreements to prevent further another geyser like we had on 67. My neighbors and our city's guests deserve better. Lastly, I want to thank you for letting me speak so far. I want to assure you, when I become mayor, I will never silence you, Bob. Last meeting, you threatened to take away my free speech during public comment and flagrant disregard for the Constitution and state law useful enough to. Our city deserves better and will do better soon. In fact, I hope genuinely that you remain involved in our city and come to city council meetings as much as I have for the last 10 years. I would love to have you on committees and listen to you speak in these very chambers in the future. That's all I have for public comment. Thank you.
Is anyone else like to come forward this time? I see no one else. Oh, Mr. Crone, please come forward and give your name and address.
Well, my name is Sandy Baldwin. Sandra on the record for 9503 West 47th Street. At 47 Terrace here in Marion. And this is my first council meeting. I've lived here in Marion since 2001. I probably should have things, but one of the things, and I don't know how this works. So I don't know if this is public comment where I got a notice saying the Johnson County property tax increase in public hearings. I don't know where that falls on the agenda. Is that during the public thing or is that during your agenda? Is someone going to speak to that?
We're going to speak about the budget a little bit later. I don't know if you were referring to the county, which just had their meeting concerning the budget, so I think you missed that meeting. But we are going to be having a Mary portion of the budget this evening.
Okay, because the news I got was 7:00 P.M., so Johnson County property tax increase.
That's probably, is that ours or is it yours?
Okay.
If you'd like to speak about the Marion budget this evening, please raise your hand when we're talking about that and why you can forward talk about budget problems at that time.
Okay, so I can.
Just have a seat right now, but we'll call you back up. Thanks for coming. Anyone else this evening want to come forward and talk about? All guys. Close out that portion of the public items. The next item up is the consent agenda. All items listed under the heading are considered to be routine by city council and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no server discussion of these items unless the council or council request, in which case that item will be removed from the extended agenda. Officer, you only have one item sitting, and it is a consent agenda. Does anybody have any discussion they'd like to have about that before we all? Seeing that by requesting that, I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Angie.
I move that the council approve consent agenda, item number one.
Anyone have a motion of a second? Say it.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Mr. Crone, have a motion of second.
Councilmember Chavella.
Aye.
Councilmember Coesmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hams.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening is the marriage report, and I have a proclamation. Let you guys know how I love proclamations, and I'm going to read that to you this time. Whereas emergencies and disasters for the natural, technological, or human cause pose ongoing threats to the safety, security, and well-being of our communities, and whereas emergency management professionals serve a critical role preparing for responding to, recovering from, and mitigating the impacts of disasters, working tirelessly to coordinate plans, resources, and communication before, during, and after incidents. And whereas the field of emergency management encompasses partnerships across government agencies, first responders, nonprofit organizations, businesses, and the public to build resilience and to ensure a coordinated response to crisis, and whereas the importance of personal and community preparedness is increasingly evident, and every resident, business, and institution play a role in helping their communities remain safe, informed, and ready. And whereas National Emergency Management Awareness Month serves as a time to recognize and appreciate the dedication and professionalism of emergency management personnel and to educate the public on how to stay prepared for all types of hazards, and whereas this month provides an opportunity to highlight preparedness activities, encourage planning efforts, and strengthen emergency response systems at entry level. And now therefore, I, Bob Page, on behalf of the city of Marion Council, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as do hereby, as National Emergency Management Awareness Month in Johnson County, and encourage all residents to take proactive steps to prepare for emergencies by developing personal and family emergency plans, assembling emergency supply kits, staying informed about local risk, and supporting the work of emergency management in building a more resilient community. Proclaim this 25th day of August 2025, I'm the mayor. We have some emergency managers who manage to keep it in here. Let's get around the applause. Time to speak this time to our police and factions.
I'm going to separate you two. Fire and stand together. So what do you want to stick with?
I have one.
Our does take everything anyway.
Okay, so that's the only proclamation I have, but I do have a few things. I always like to spend a moment just talking about things I had in council. Apologize for not getting back to the council and seeing we'll cover that stuff I might have missed. I know I missed the lunch and learn, but I think some of the council. I missed it so much, I'm not sure who was and wasn't there. I had a council member attended the Marion selfie shop with our sitting employees in front of the city hall. Always a pleasure to be part of Team Marion. A couple of council members attended the Marion Music Festival at the Community Center. I attended the legislative forum at the Sylvester Powell Community Center. I got to hear from our Kansas legislators about what's going on at the state level. I had a council member who got blistering on the night of the emergency agenda. Is there anything else that I missed? Okay, Mr. Coesmeyer.
Yeah, a number of us, three council members, have enrolled in the Marion Police Department Citizens Academy.
Okay, thank you.
We've had our first session.
Yeah, the first session.
It's been great.
Good, thanks for sharing that. Anything else that I missed? Oh, go ahead and share.
We also had the public art meeting last week with our public artists that are working on the.
And they're in town, I understand.
Yeah, Joe and Felicity are here and they're working on it and check out their progress. And they're having a painting party on Saturday where you can help paint some of the elements that will be incorporated into the.
Is it like bringing your own brush or?
No, it's just show up at the community center from 10 to 4.
10 to 4?
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing that.
Yeah.
Well, that being said, and that concludes the marriage report. Next thing up would be this evening would be, it looks like a public hearing to receive comments regarding the city exceeding revenue neutral rate.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we get to finalize some things for the 2026 fiscal year budget. And the first thing legally that we have to do is the mil rate. And a lot of this is going to be a reiteration of things that we've discussed at past meetings, but I'm still going to go through it for public sake and then just refresh it for everyone else in the room. So a reminder that the revenue neutral rate is going to be the same amount of property tax revenue of the year we are currently in, so we're going to be talking about what we estimate for 2025. So for Marion, the amount that we believe we're going to bring in according to the county is that 7.7 million dollar number. Then that would equate to 25.855 mils. So if council would like to generate the same amount of property tax revenue as the year we're currently in for 2026, that would mean that the mil rate would need to be 25.855. However, the rate that staff has identified for us to be able to provide the same level of service to the community and the same programs is going to be 26.412. You will notice that that decreased a little bit, 0.03 from the last time we talked. That was after certification with the state budget worksheets of all of our numbers, so that is the official number. If you were to move forward, I would submit to the state of all of their worksheets that they require. A reminder that if you would like to adopt the revenue neutral rate, that philosophy states that we will, the government will provide next year services at last year's prices. So as staff, or as council has requested of staff, we are looking at how we can lower the mil levy each year. And like I stated, the way that, or the most reductions that we feel comfortable doing for the 2026 budget, bring them to you, is 26.412. This is a little over a quarter cent decrease from the 2025 rate. These are the numbers that were provided to the city by Johnson County. These came about two months ago. So again, it's just showing you what the revenue neutral rate they identified as. That's not a calculation we do. That's what the county gives us. And then it is showing how that differs from what staff is proposing. The difference in revenue is about $166,000. As we've discussed previously, Marion is very middle of the pack when it comes to our total mil rate. As you can see here, I have the 2025 rate that is slightly higher than the proposed 2026 rate. All other cities that are up here, that is going to be their 2025 rate, as most have not yet adopted their rate. We are also earlier than most cities. And then, as I stated, the last time we talked about the mil rate, we are actually one of the few cities in Johnson County in this area that are planning to reduce our mil rate. So up there you can see the two cities that are anticipating that they will have to increase their rate from their 2025 levy. And then there's a large group that are planning to keep theirs flat, which means no increase. So that would be if we were to keep a 26.665 rate. And then there are a few that are doing slightly under a quarter, slightly under us. And then we are in the group that are doing a quarter to about 50 cents reduction. And there's no one that is anticipating doing over 50 cents of a reduction. So that is all that I have for you on the revenue neutral rate. Again, there is nothing, even though we are having the public hearing tonight, for you to be able to increase it. There's nothing saying that we have to. This is simply just giving council and the public time to discuss what your best interest and your prerogative is, and staff is fully prepared to adjust as you see fit tonight. We do have to adopt the revenue neutral rate by resolution if you want to exceed it. If you choose to go with the revenue neutral rate for less than that, we do not need any motion tonight. And then we will just adjust the budget at the next public hearing at the end after this. That is all I have, but happy to answer your questions.
You press it through, Lloydberry.
I just want to clarify, you talked about revenue neutral rate being, it would be collecting the same number of dollars as revenue as this year in 2025 as next year would be quote-unquote revenue neutral.
Yes, sir.
And like you said, we have to spend, we have to reduce services to account for inflation because we all know everything's gotten more expensive this year and we couldn't provide. We're even under what we anticipate inflation to be for 2025.
Yes, sir. Your math is correct. Yes, sir. Yes, we, with the revenue neutral rate, there is no adjustment for inflation or anything. It is simply the exact same amount of dollars that were brought in the year.
Because I know I can bring to the future that we're going to get a question about it, the reason why people's dollar amount in their property tax is most likely going up is not because rates are going up in the city, it's because their property is more valuable than it was last year.
Correct, yes, sir.
I mean, I know it's a blanket statement, may not hold true for every case I run through, but.
Yes, that is the most accurate assumption to make. So for the average home in Marion, it did increase because that's valuation by about 10,000. Last year we were at 300,000 is the average home value. This year we're at 310,000, so that can tell you about what the average increase was for this year. The difference in those two, in the revenue neutral rate, and then the proposed rate by staff is about $19 to that 310,000 home. So that $19 difference would be over the course of the year, not monthly. Yes, sir.
Thank you. You press it through, Mr. Crone.
So that $19 per home, that means the average home, if we do the proposed rate compared to the revenue neutral rate, will pay an extra almost $10 per, by, per like property tax check that we write in May and December?
Yes. Most people pay, write two checks, so there's one towards the beginning of the year and then one about halfway through.
Okay. Sorry, that.
Yes.
Number helps put that all in context.
You're accurate, sir. Yes, the average home pays about $920 a year, and it would increase to about $940.
Okay.
Any other questions? Some more questions. We will, the public meeting, we will be discussing the budget at the next public meeting, correct?
Yes, the next public hearing.
Public hearings, excuse me, at the next public hearing. But this one will be strictly for public hearing for the mil rate.
Yes, sir.
Revenue neutral.
Yes.
So in reference to, Mr. Crone, I think you would want to speak at the next one, but unless you want to speak at this one for the revenue neutral rate. And if that goes for anyone out there in the public or in the audience that wants to speak about the revenue neutral rate or has concerns about that, so we're going to enter for that.
Yes, just clarification, this public hearing is going to be if anyone has comments about their personal property tax. This would probably be the public hearing to do that in because once you set this, we can't go back.
Oh, okay, so.
Yes.
Excuse me, ma'am, would you like, would you please come forward at this time if you have something about your property tax? Thanks for that, Lloydberry.
Again, my name is Sandra Baldwin, Sandy Echoy. 9503 West 47 Terrace, Marion, Kansas. When we bought, when I, we bought the house, my late husband was alive. And our property tax, since that time, and I've been a widow for 15 years, we were involved in a car accident in Indiana as Minister of the Gospel, and we were involved in a car accident, which they ruled him in fault. He's a safe driver, pulled out from a flashing yellow, that was cross-traffic lights, you know, with the little signs right back, and have not been in that territory but one time in his life. But now I'm a widow for 15 years, and I've seen my property tax double in these years. I've not been able to repair my house. I have siding and other issues. I've gone twice to, when I've got my property tax, I've gone twice to have it lessened. I get like a $3,000 less. And I don't know, when I saw that the Johnson County property tax had increased, it was like, how can my property tax increase and double in amount in the time that I lived in my house and I've had, not been able to make repairs? And I don't know who does the adjustments. I've not had anybody come out to my property and do, you know, do an adjustment and look at the outside. And, you know, I try and keep it in doing the best I can, but, so I don't know where to go to appeal and have someone come, because I've taken pictures, the two times I've gone to have it adjusted, it's like no one pays attention. And I don't know if that's the city, that's Johnson County, and I, I just, when I saw that, I felt compelled by the word to come and speak and just find out what I can do. And maybe this isn't the right place, but someone can give me counsel.
Sure, well, sorry about your husband, but the Johnson County Appraiser is who does the appraisal of your property, and that's not city-related to determine what the value of your property is. So that's who you would need to see about lowering the appraised value of your home. But we do also have some grants that you might qualify for, and I would direct you afterwards to see if our Community Development Department has something to do about some of those repayment grants that are maybe available to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, I've worked at City Union Mission for, this is my 33rd year, working with the board and office, and so. Anyway, if you don't have, I mean.
Mr. Crone, is it true that our portion of the city taxes is roughly about 25% of your full property tax assessment?
Of the complete, of the total tax bill that you would pay to all of the taxing entities on your tax bill, yes, the city is approximately 25% of that. The rest, largest portion would be the school district, and you've got the county and community college. You know, 25% would be the city's portion, approximately.
Thank you, sir. And a lot of people may not know that, but that's a helpful remark. Thank you, sir. Does anyone else want to come forward on this side? Billy Crone, board and vote in.
Billy Crone, 6633 West Street. My name is, it's called C R O A N, is in November 4th. I object to exceeding the revenue neutral rate this year. We have given away over $100 million to the rich developers of this, to rich developers in the city over the last four years. If we give such money away to the rich, the least we could do would be to give our residents a break on their property taxes. You know, the people that voted for you, that'd be kind of nice. Don't fall for Jacob's mill rate myth. The only reason that our taxes are going up is the decision of this governing body and the other, of the other governing bodies that contribute to the property tax bills we receive. My name is Billy Crone. The neighbors, my neighbors have an option. This November, I will stand for lower property taxes, not higher. And if you ignore us tonight, we will not ignore you this November.
Anyone else up there in the audience that would like to come forward at this time? I see no body that wants to come forward. I want to get somebody to close out the public hearing portion here, and then I would entertain a motion for that this evening. What, Ms. Angie?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Can I have a motion, Dr. Seagull?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Mr. Crone, do you have a motion, second?
Councilmember Coesmeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hams.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leyhey.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chavella.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we're with the, well, I guess for the private meetings, but we're going, well, the council can talk about the election.
Yes, sir. So thank you for setting the mil rate. So in front of you, this is going to be, again, the same thing we did last time, but this is what is driving the budget this year. So as a reminder, for total revenues, this is going to be all funds. We are bringing in. We are bringing in approximately 40 million. Expenditures are approximately 45 million. Uh, our end date fund balance is still very healthy and meets all of our financial and council policies. We would also like to point out that that fund balance may seem high. That is spread across all funds. Um, it is a requirement to meet at least 30% in the general fund, which is a large portion of that. The other is going to be a substantial amount in CMP, the capital improvement, uh, project fund. And that is going to be for planned improvements in the future that council and staff have identified. This is an overview of just the general fund. Uh, it is showing that mill levy decrease as council just approved. Uh, and then showing a slight increase for sales and use tax. Again, about 3% and then between two and four, which is very healthy and on track. Uh, and that's going to be from 2024 actuals, since we don't have a good, uh, number yet for 2025. With expenditures, we did implement or plan to implement everything up there, including a full-time position for a technology specialist. Uh, and then everything else was pulled back as much as possible. We did trim the budget from anything unnecessary so that revenues and expenditures could balance this year. And we would not have to dip into fund balance at all. So very proud of that for the city. And we were able to do that while still decreasing the mill levy. We are going to end with a fund balance of nine million, um, combined. That is about with risk management. As for policy, that is about 38.3% of revenues. So we do need policy. What is driving the budget? Again, that technology specialist position, um, expanded IT contracts as we try to implement, um, new, everything new that's going on and keep our security up to date. And then we also have our 11.5 million capital improvement plan, which is part of the summary, uh, the budget summary that was presented. And we also have our community events and grants that are ongoing. Some did increase just based on use in the prior years. So, um, there are some like the rebates that Mayor mentioned. So we are keeping those in the budget increasing as needed. Here are a list of all of those grants. Um, we definitely encourage citizens to apply for those. There's programs that have been identified by council in the past. Here is also our equipment reserve fund. Obviously, this is a substantial amount of money, but all of these items were planned. There is almost nothing new. Um, it's ongoing, uh, replacements for different vehicles or large equipment. Now, I will say that the budget that I presented last time has a very similar number. We have about 2,000, I believe, dollars off from the property tax, but everything else is the same. So there were no change, no major changes to what I presented to you in the summary last time. But I'm happy to go over anything again, or any questions that you might have?
Any questions regarding the board? Questions? Questions, that way. Mayor, good job. Okay, so I will open up the public hearing portion of this. Would anybody like to speak this evening in reference to our budget that's been proposed this evening? Who's going forward? Any address for her?
I oppose the budget as currently proposed because it exceeds the revenue neutral rate. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to come forward this evening on the budget hearing? See now, uh, close out the public hearing motion to that. And I would entertain a motion this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, thanks.
I move that the council approve a resolution to adopt the 2026 operating budget as proposed.
Do you have a motion or have a second? Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Lakey.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodridge.
Aye.
Councilmember Shadada.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like next time up would be, uh, consider approval of a request for change to use, change of use. We've got. Mayor, councilmembers. This is second, you have a search change. Seeing before you have a request, um, from the walls, a lot of, for a change use to add automobile sales as well as a, uh, plumb rate development plan associated with that request for 7220, uh, West Franger. It's up here on the screen right now. Uh, we're operating from here at the site. Um, internally staff calls up the Holiday House and I'll explain that to you here in just a second. But as you can see, uh, the property is outlined in blue up there. It is, uh, surrounded on the east side by I-35, on the west side by Venus, so forever. Um, there are two buildings on there. Um, this proposal approved, the proposal is to tear down the buildings on front and keep the building on back out. Uh, removing the building in front, in the front part, the part that faces I-35. Well, after the construction of approximately about 22,000 square foot, a new automobile dealership called Genesis. It is the Genesis, it's the high-end main plate for Hyundai Motor Company. Um, so, uh, again, um, a little bit more about the site. Uh, to the south is an HVAC, HVAC vendor as well as a little further south, uh, automobile services and repair to the north is Evo Brothers, the cleaner repair facility. A little further north of that is a self-storage facility. And then, um, just north of the self-storage facility, that's when you start getting into, uh, the number of automobile dealerships that front along Frontage Road there. So again, this is a change in use request. Uh, the purpose of the change in use, since it is own plan, the property is own plan, you develop in general. Uh, there's user restrictions in that PUDG, um, uh, district. One of those is no automobile sales. So this is obviously a change in use request to add automobile service to that district. Again, as a change in use, you, um, review this and make the, uh, a, um, document, another request. Use the golden factor. Uh, the golden factors are all contained in the staff report, um, for your overview. Um, so a little bit of history about that again. As I mentioned earlier, walls are all voted on in Minnesota. They have member dealerships in Minnesota and Wichita. They got a property owner and applicant. They recently purchased the property this year in June. Um, and again, there are 22,000 square foot, uh, automobile dealership on there. Um, back in, uh, 1990, 1993, that's when this property was rezoned and had a development plan approved by the city council. That was for that 60,000 square foot building. And at that time, the use of that, that's the, you see the site here, um, as it currently stands. Uh, at that time, the purpose of that building was twofold. One was for national, um, office equipment and the business that outfitted offices. And also for, um, retail business called Holiday House. So seasonal, um, goods and services like that. That's the reason why the staff has always called it the Holiday House. Um, again, up on the screen there, you can see, um, the current, uh, existing conditions. Uh, so to your right is I-35. To the east, to your left on the screen there is the Venus, so forever. Uh, the front building here is a 60,000 square foot building that was constructed back in 1993. That's the building that will be demolished. Uh, the backside, um, was a building that was approved for construction back in 2016. So 14,000 square foot building. That building will remain current term pro-source, which is a flooring, flooring company will remain in place as well. Couple other things to notice on existing condition conditions. There are two access points off of East Franger, excuse me, West Franger Road located here and here. Um, the proposed development plan would not change those access points. Also like to point out that the applicant provided a traffic, uh, analysis or traffic memo with this. Um, reports, so that memo stated that with the reduction in square footage that would come about of this redevelopment, also be a corresponding reduction in amount of traffic. Therefore, no, uh, there's going to be any type of traffic improvements or redevelopments to the summer. Another important, important part about this, um, while we're here is currently the site has an onsite detention pond that is located right here. Um, the applicant did also submit a, uh, memo, and we got a stormwater analysis. And the memo said there's going to be about 3% decrease in automobile service and hearing green space on site. Memo also said that that detention pond can handle the off, the site's stormwater runoff. Um, also important is we've been doing a number of redevelopment projects since this. Um, best management practices are E and P's. That's the improvement to the quality of stormwater. That's something else that's been a requirement that's been, uh, put in place for the redevelopment that we are adhering to. Part of that, um, the applicants agree to some conditions and improve, but there will be a strong, uh, filter uh, on the, um, stormwater inputs. So this is proposed, uh, redevelopment, proposed site plan. Again, um, up here, uh, towards the top, that would be the new automobile dealership. Again, oriented mostly east to west on the north side of the property. South side, we're mostly a very park area as well as vehicle store. And back here, you can see that the, um, pro-source, 14,000 square foot building will remain. You can see also that the access points are green and there also we've maintained good access to the building in back. Um, here is the landscape plan. And this is a really good demonstration of what the property is going to look like. Um, there's going to be about 40% of green space on the site. It doesn't show up here because of the table here, but this site does extend on first and south for about 40% of the site of the green space. Interior green space, so about 19% of it. Um, the landscape will show on, particularly on the east side is very similar typical to what we've seen with our early car dealerships that are along Frontage Road. And the site also provide the required amount of street trees. And then finally, doing a run, a walk about the, um, exterior elevations. Again, the very top elevation there, that is the back elevation. That's the elevation that faces to the west from just the train tracks in the other building. As you can see, the primary, uh, building materials of this will be a tilt of concrete, um, as well as ephesus and a large amount of window glazing. Uh, the corporate colors for Genesis are, are gray and black. So as you go down a little bit further, the next line down, uh, this is the building for size that faces to the south. Again, you can see extensive amount of glazing that will be here on the right-hand side. That's where the showroom will be at. And the next one down, that is the, um, the size that faces to the, um, north. So again, extensive amount of glazing on there. And then finally, at the very bottom, that is the view that will be seen from I-35. Uh, again, a large amount of glazing, uh, fits right along with other car dealerships that we have that are further to the north there. So, um, with that, um, your planning commission has a public hearing on this. And after public, public hearing, uh, based upon the staff report and all the information they received unanimously recommend approval for this. With that, we're happy to answer your questions.
Is the building going to be LEED certified or is there any other type of environmental impact factors being taken into consideration for the construction?
I do not know the answer to that. That would be something probably to ask the applicant who is here and who may have to probably speak to that.
Uh, do I dress that now or anywhere I'm wearing?
That's, uh, yeah, you wait. Any other questions? Mr. Callahan.
Uh, yeah, um, have they already started demolition of this building?
They have not. The building is vacant.
Okay.
Um, they are in the process of working on the, uh, giving the companies. The building is a. Please be sure.
Building's been torn down already.
Oh, so yes, they have got the building permitted for it, so they probably have started. Didn't realize that nobody had told me.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
It's starting to go down. It's almost down.
We have lots of demo permits and they come in and go in from our offices, you obviously.
It's okay. I didn't mean to like overcorrect you. I just.
No, I appreciate that. It was just by, and obviously I did not know it.
Yeah, it's almost down.
Okay. That's probably why I didn't notice it. It was almost gone. You're a day gone, right?
Give me a call.
Is it dealership? Is it just selling cars or is there a service department?
There is a service department. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Um, any question? You mentioned the, um, the green space. Is it a net gain or a reduction in green space? It's a net gain in green space or approximately 2%? Any other questions? Mayor, go ahead. Exchange.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Oh, yes, please go ahead then. I was looking for your hand, but I couldn't see.
Okay, do you can hear me? Um, it's, so this question is for Brian, but also I, I was hoping to be there in person to actually app the, um, the representative. Um, but as Brian knows, in the past, I have called multiple times, um, asking questions about our car dealerships on both east and west Frontage Road who, um, are not using their car carrier, um, plan to drop off and pick up cars. They've been parking on Frontage Road. Um, and it seems like there's nothing that we can do about it. So what I was hoping today is to get a guarantee from the representative that they will use the plan that's established on, um, C2.2. Um, so they can, so they don't block our lanes on Frontage Road and create hazards for our drivers.
So I will say a couple of things about that. First of all, um, this is, uh, Brian, by the way, and councilor service. Uh, first of all, there is a note on the face of plan. There'll be no, uh, illiterating or online vehicles in the right way. That's a typical note on the face of all other plans. Uh, we do, uh, we repeat, and we do pursue those when we are able to. And we will let those to the best extent possible. However, as we all know, uh, those trucks show up, they unload and they're gone. Um, yeah, it is a very difficult thing to, to chase down. But we do, uh, when we are, uh, see it, we do pursue it to the best of our ability. Um, so we do have tools in place, obviously, though we can't be there coming 4:07. So, um, I will also let you out and speak. Oh, I was also going to add, as, uh, councilmember service did point out, that they did provide, um, a truck turning plate, uh, template as part of your. I could demonstrate some trucks can navigate and get on-site and on-the-go vehicles, um, without having to do it. I'm, so, I did want to add that as well.
Planning commission has had any issues with the zero tolerance for error on that turning radius?
Uh, I mean, uh, no, they really haven't. Um, they can usually use, uh, if they need to, they'll have multiple curves in that location. Go ahead, Sam.
Um, so as I understand it, this dealership is moving from Overland Park into Marion?
I believe so, but I looked at the applicant.
Okay, and I'm, so I'm just curious if it's an expansion. I'm assuming that's why they're moving is for bigger and better.
Yeah, I'm familiar with their site on Medcap and this site is definitely near. But I will let them talk and speak to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If you're better than this. And who would be coming forward or for our applicants? I believe, uh, the applicant's architect, Scott Slog, is here. But if you would give me just a second to, to give his information, I'd be, I'd appreciate it. So applicant, uh, is here in present and he would like to speak to you.
Yes, sir. Mayor.
Okay. Scott, would you come forward, Sam? Give your name and, uh, and business address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, name is Scott Slog. Slog Architects located 4600 Madison, Suite 350, Kansas City. I have the good fortune of sharing with you our vision for this facility. And I will also try to attempt to answer all the questions that, uh, you asked of me. Mr. Dyer did a phenomenal job to give you a quick overview of what we're doing here. I thought I would show you the colorized version as well as some 3D images that will help to bring the building to life.
I'm here, great.
Thank you. Again, as you had mentioned in the site plan, we are accommodating existing buildings behind it, which is pro-source. So one thing we had to do, when Mr. Dyer mentioned the truck template, we have to accommodate truck traffic back there as well. And the truck template we created by our civil engineers shows very clearly that the car carrier can navigate through this facility very easily. That was important to both us and the city to ensure that would occur. These elevations, again, are starting to show colorways that are reminiscent of their branding and trade dress. And, uh, you'll be able to see those better in the 3D images I'm about to share with you. Within this facility, I think there's a question asked about service. So we have to meet the branding requirements of Genesis for this facility. It's the first time in Kansas City. And as a result, it's going to have to meet all their requirements as well as city requirements in its maintenance. One thing that's important to note is that we've also added a photo bay, which is a 360 photo bay that photograph their vehicles as well as car wash. Those are in addition to what they normally have for their facility. One thing we also worked with you very carefully upon was the location and the height of your mineless sign. I can't exactly remember exactly when first, this, Mr. Dyer's probably 15 years ago, almost. In which we first did the Toyota, we had to get forced with the Toyota dealership. And so that mineless sign was established with a sea level that had to be used for all other mineless signs along that corridor, including this one. There's a question asked by the planning commission about its height. Its actual height for this tower, if you will, is less than the Toyota, Toyota sign because of the sea level height. You'll see it here shown in the, uh, upper left-hand corners image. Just want to make sure that you had a note of that. And again, that the trade, that branding and trade dress will be utilized on that sign. There'll be the LED light. It'll be, uh, very subtle, I think, uh, It'll be, uh, very subtle, I think, elegant in its approach. It will not have a lot of bright lighting to, in, inside this housing. Here you go. There's an image looking directly to the south and west. So the, uh, aforementioned Pro Source building is behind, it shows a white box. And as Mister Dyer mentioned, there's a lot of glass inside the showroom. In fact, one thing that Genesis wanted us to do is to wrap the glass all the way around the building as a clear story. So even though we're not necessarily pursuing a LEED certification, this harvests so much natural light inside the building that reduces our need for lighting for most of the building's, um, daily use. Again, you're showing the, uh, the two elements on the north side. You're looking to the southeast where you have a photo bay and a service ride up. Here's a view looking to the northeast. Again, the showroom on the right and the clear story glass that wraps all the way around the showroom and to the administrative offices. And a view looking to the south, I'm sorry, to the northwest. Again, the Pro Source building in the background kind of gives you reference. And the use of landscaping, in fact, we've asked for KDOT to allow for us to have landscaping along in front of our building that's put in their right way. Of course, with the advent of any kind of expansion, we have to relocate the landscaping, but they allowed us to have more landscaping than we would have actually on our, our site. And here's how much light is looking into that space. So at night, it's going to glow very, very nicely. And the use of landscaping and convenient parking for customers makes this thing a very inviting building. We're also providing a lot of, uh, zero clearance entry, radio compliance for ease of customers that come into the facility. Like as I had mentioned, there's that clear story glass that wraps around the building that allows a lot of natural light to make its way deep into the facility. Here's a view from I thirty-five. So it should be a, I think, very attractive building and how it's perceived as folks drive northbound and southbound I thirty-five. And that concludes my presentation. I'm trying to think if there's a question you need to answer. Oh, a demo. So we do have a demo permits, but we're working on the interior first to make sure that what we can salvage and can be recycled, we do that first. Then, once that's been completed, we will start to go to the exterior demolition to complete that work. The timing, we hope, depending on how we get our permitting, uh, in place, would be to open this thing late summer of next year, twenty-six. So it should happen pretty quickly. It takes about an eight months period to build this facility. And I will entertain any questions you may have.
I have a previous question about LEED certification for the building or other environmental impact factors.
We are not looking at that right now. Uh, but one thing you should know is that as architects, we find that there's a social responsibility for us to look at all aspects of the design and construction of these facilities. Uh, and as a result, we found in our industry that many folks have taken proper steps to make sure they're using recycled content. They're using good methodology, uh, in how they construct buildings, reduce waste. This building's no different. So even though we're not seeking LEED certification, I think a lot of that stuff's already baked into the cake.
Other questions?
And then just to revisit my question about the size of the facility and perhaps the number of people employed, how that's changing?
Uh, it's twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet. Uh, as I think was suggested, it's, it's being relocated from a very small facility. It's seventy-seventh and Metcalf. It used to be the former Mazda dealership back in the day, you guys would call that. And that's probably five thousand square feet. And, and they've done such a great job in selling cars, uh, but they don't have a way to properly service these vehicles. So they're very excited to get this facility open. In fact, they're, they're building, um, enough, we think, enough service cars here to be able to stay there for a long period of time and, and service their customers, uh, into the future. Um, that's your question, ma'am?
I was hoping you'd tell me that there were going to be a lot more jobs.
I, I don't know exactly what the number of jobs might be and I, I'm sure we can get that answer to you at a later date.
Okay.
Uh, we, we find that, uh, the service technicians alone, if there was sixteen service days, you've got sixteen technicians during the day and probably a couple of who are substitutes or, or, uh, part-time service techs. And then inside the showroom, I suspect there's probably fifteen to twenty employees there, but that's just a rough estimate.
Other questions?
Um, I had two questions. Once you mentioned the social responsibilities of architects, I'm just curious what steps you are taking to go above and beyond the limits of the money? For either energy code or building code by safety, accessibility?
Well, I'm, I'm a LEED certified architect, first off, so it's important for me to use, um, good practice standards for buildings, uh, as well as having social responsibility. Uh, we, we find that, uh, these buildings are always a challenge to, uh, make it important to our customers to understand the, the value of sustainability of these buildings. And you can define sustainability however you like. It's, it comes in many different forms. That includes being a good steward and how I constructed it. Uh, the operational, uh, aspects of this, that you're using materials that will be sustainable and not have to be replaced over time. That the operations are essentially sipping energy and not gulping it. And, and so we, we make sure that all aspects of the design, architecture, structural, panel, plumbing, are all, uh, really pursuing, um, excellence in providing those materials finishes in operation.
Do you know how much it exceeds the code minimum for energy usage?
I, I don't know right of hand, but I, I do know that these facilities use a lot of energy. So, um, we, we find that the, the dealers have understood that, especially if they're going to operate these for a long period of time, that it's in their best interest to reduce their energy costs as well.
All right. I don't feel like I got an answer to my question, but that does lead me into my second question. You talked about, um, party materials that are sustainable and have, um, long use life. Uh, you mentioned EFS is a primary material. EFS is notoriously cheap version of stucco and I was just curious if that is part of Genesis brand standard?
It's not really EFS. Th- this is a, either a tilt up or pre-cast panel system. So you actually cast the concrete and tilt it into place. It has a finish that may be reminiscent of EFS, but it's not EFS.
Maybe Brian said EFS as a finish material.
Well, it has that, has that appearance. Maybe it's classified by the city as being EFS, but it's truly a, a concrete panel that has a sandwich of insulation inside of it that gives the proper hard value for the building to perform.
Okay. Not that I'm familiar with sandwiched walls, so if it's not EFS, then my question is moved.
Any other questions for Mr. Slog? I see no questions that you serve for.
Thank you.
Answer all questions. Okay, well, um, at this point, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Anne?
Yes, Mister Mayor. I move that the council concur with recommendation of the planning commission and approve with conditions. A request for a change in use to add automobile sales and service to an existing PUDG and, um, associated preliminary development plan located at seventy-seven twenty west Frontage Road.
Do you have a real motion? Wait a second, judge.
Mister Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk, a real motion, say.
Councilmember Callton?
Aye.
Councilmember Lahey?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yowridge?
Real quick before I vote, I want to remind everybody that we lost a local business for this new business to come in. Uh, relating local business to a lot of people in the Croatian community specifically. Um, and we're adding another car dealership and giving them incentive IRBs. Okay. Well, I just want to remind everybody that. Um, so with that, I...
Councilmember Shaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar?
Aye.
Councilmember Hance?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, next item up is going to be, consider approval of resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next item on your agenda is related to your last item as to consider approval of resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds to provide sales tax exemption on construction materials for a commercial facility located at seven two two zero Frontage Road. The city is in receipt of a application requesting industrial revenue bonds from Walzer Automotive. Who, as you, uh, discussed, will be bringing in a new Genesis automobile dealership. Uh, they are requesting sales tax exemption on the cost for, uh, constructing, equipping and furnishing that new dealership. Uh, and as a reminder of IRBs, IRBs are effectively a discount on sales tax. It's effectively waives, it's about a nine, well, if it was bought in Marion, it'd be a nine point four seven five percent discount on the cost of construction because that is the value of the sales tax. Pursuant to the bond documents, the way that, uh, an IRB would work is that the dealership would be leased to the city through a base lease. Then the city would lease it back to the dealer. Uh, and the rents and the bond payments would mirror one another. So the rents that we would charge would be the debt service on the industrial revenue bonds that will get them sales tax exemption. The city had, well, we are effectively issuing the industrial revenue bonds. The city has no obligation to pay those bonds. It's actually spelled out in state statute that this process is really just how the, the state has determined is, uh, the best way to award a sales tax exemption. Uh, per city policy, the company has to pay all the origination administrative fees on the issuance of those bonds. Uh, and we did put together in your packet just a ballpark of what potentially the value of it would be. Uh, based on the application, reconstruction cost would be ten million dollars. If we assume ten million dollars is the construction cost, the discount would be nine point four seven five percent, which would be the sales tax exemption. Uh, the majority of that comes from the state. The state is six point five percent of your nine point four seven five. So approximately six hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be, uh, a discount provided by the state. Uh, Johnson County, other piece of the sales tax is one point four seven five. So approximately a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of value could be derived from there. And then city is one point five percent. If all of these materials were to have been sourced in Marion, the discount that the city would be providing through that sales tax exemption would be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, this is optimistically that ten million dollars is the right number and that all of these things would have been sourced in the serving, uh, in Kansas. The, the motivation for IRBs from the state is really, especially when you are located close to state line. You want to incentivize dealerships, uh, or developments to source their materials in Kansas. So that is why the state has been willing to forego their large chunk of sales tax that goes, uh, at the form of sale. Uh, we have, uh, a resolution. This is the first step in the process. Should the council want to provide those IRBs, we would come back at the end of construction. We would, uh, ask the council to consider, consider ordinance, which we will do actually our next item. Another development, uh, Jacob Lowry is our bond counsel, True Tech Rock. He developed, uh, he put together this resolution intent to be answering any of your industrial revenue questions. We also have, as you've seen, perhaps the Walzer Automotive here who would be happy to answer any questions you have about, uh, their particular, um, need for this incentive. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or turn it over to...
Do you have questions for Mr. Dyer? This time? No questions for Mr. Dyer? Oh, yeah. I should have...
I have questions for applicant.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. All right. Anything from Mr. Dyer? Okay. Which applicant's going to be representing the city? Mr. Wodden?
I believe Mister...
Mr. Dyer?
There we go.
Okay. Please come forward, sir, if you provide your name and your business address.
Mayor of Minnesota, my name is Pete Heaven. My address is sixty-two oh one Collepool Avenue. And I represent, uh, the applicant, Walzer Automotive Group. I stand for any questions you might have.
Where are any questions, Mr. Dyer? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Dyer.
I have some questions. Um, so no one from the applicant is actually here because they're out of state, correct?
No, Don Schelling, uh, I'm an officer of the company, he's here.
Okay.
Would you like to talk to him?
Um, I'm just curious, you know, we, um, come into Marion. We love to have our new developments really invest in our community. And so I want to make sure that they are willing to make an investment in our community through our school district, through our foundation in Marion, you know, just different ways of being involved at the chamber. All of the things that we ask of all of our applicants for things like this.
That is what I want to come up with. And, and just so you know, Walzer has twenty-six locations, uh, in Minnesota and Kansas. And I'm sure they're, uh, deeply involved in all the cities. I do, which is it?
Your name and, or business address, sir?
Don Schelling, forty-four oh one American Boulevard, West in Bloomington, Minnesota. Uh, the Walzer Foundation is very ingrained in the local communities in which we serve. Five percent of our pre-tax dollars goes right back to the community through our foundation.
In all of your locations or like your home state or stuff?
Wherever the location serves. Our Kansas City operations support Kansas City local, um, community things. And then this, um, Marion would sponsor, Marion would benefit from the five percent here. Minnesota keeps, there's stuff in Minnesota.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dyer?
Um, actually, this ties to, actually, my question should ask, uh, Chris Engle, he was up there. We don't, we tie our, um, investments in local events to, to funding, not higher beam, that's correct? About sponsoring events and, uh...
We, we build civic, civic obligations into any of our redevelopment agreements.
But not higher beams.
If we were to have a, a formal agreement, we, we could absolutely build a civic obligation or... Just, uh, hold them accountable for the statement just made. You may, you may...
Um, I guess my question for you though is this IRB, what, what does this sales tax incentive do for you that you wouldn't do without it?
Well, it's, it's, I mean, it's an, it's an incentive. I, I can't tell you we would not build without it. I don't think, I don't think that could disgenius, but it's a savings that will be passed along in the future with our customers, consumers. Um, it adds about a ten percent discount, yes.
Any other questions for the chairman, Mr. Schell?
Mayor, I would like to add a couple of things.
Sure.
Since we're talking about economics, our projected sales are going to be about forty million dollars a year. So sales tax paid to Marion will be in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand dollars per year. Based on the other, uh, car dealerships nearby, we will be paying an additional hundred and eighty thousand dollars in real estate tax given you're receiving now. And we'll have twenty-four full-time employees. So no other question came up?
I have a quick peek back on that. So how many people are employed currently at the dealership?
Nineteen full-time currently.
So you'll add size, roundabout? Thank you.
After the first year, we would expect to have at least another nineteen or twenty, so...
Great.
Moreings, all full-time, all full pay, full benefits, so...
Any other questions for the gentleman? Oh, go ahead, Mr. Schell. Please, no delay, that is okay. One more question. One more question.
Yeah, I'm a little curious about the Walzer Foundation. So what exactly does your foundation support and where you put that investment? And I know in local communities, but one specifically, because that can mean a lot of things.
It is traditionally, the money goes towards education, um... Uh, underserved children, single parent families, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Any other questions for, release these two gentlemen? I think we're good, next, sir. Okay, well, I would, I've got some questions. I've got some questions for the bond counsel, actually. Okay. Questions for the bond counsel? Even, uh, business editor, sir?
Uh, Jacob Lowry. I'm at twenty-four oh five, Ring Boulevard, Street six hundred, James.
All right, so I, I get sort of the big thing that the IRBs to provide the, uh, sales tax relief. Um, but like, we don't... But like, we don't necessarily give the general contractor a card that says they don't charge them sales tax, right?
It's a exemption certificate that they can take to.
Okay, so they don't go to Home Depot and buy a bunch of two-by-fours and then give, and then file their receipts and get reimbursed later?
Right, it's annual taxing.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Is that?
No, that actually cut out like three. No, right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got mine.
Oh, sorry. Please go forward.
Genesis Ledger, we auto-sales will be displacing a unique local Marion business, one-of-a-kind Strawberry Hill, Papitilla. This will further erode the diversity in Marion's tax base and businesses and raise some of what makes Marion unique and great. I do hope that all businesses prosper, including Genesis. And I approve the resounding request, but losing Strawberry Hill is not something to reward by giving one point eight billion dollars to the rich. We've just heard they will build it either way, so we won't lose them by denying the IRB. We'll help set precedent of not handing out money so much. Bob, please undo it.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Because various numbers have been pushed around. Can I be absolutely sure about what this number is supposed to be?
Which number?
I.
Which number?
The resolution I'm intent for the issuance of taxable IRBs in the amount not to exceed eighteen million, six hundred and nineteen dollars?
That is, that is the.
Six hundred and nineteen thousand?
That is the amount of the IRBs that at the conclusion of the construction, we would come back and issue.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a not to exceed number.
I understand. You, I didn't hear you mention it, but then you mentioned a lot of other numbers, so I just verify.
But we think estimated the building is ten million?
Well, they're, they included the cost of the acquisition in that eighteen million dollars, so they would finance the cost of acquisition also.
Yeah, but the, the sales tax portion of all, portion of that is only roughly ten million dollars.
And so in the, in the uses that was included in your package, you've got land, so eighteen point six million dollars. You've got land is eight point six, construction cost eight point five, machinery equipment is one point five. So the sales tax would be in the numbers that I just, again, estimated, use ten million bucks.
Questions, Ms. Schubert?
So sorry, so then that's the total value of the property in at most, the sales tax.
We need to.
Yes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can look at that, Chris, we may need to refine that before we actually issue the bonds to make sure it's captured the right construction cost. But yeah, they can only take sales tax exemption on expenditures they actually make. And then they have to prove up those expenditures by providing those records to the trustee.
And the max sales tax expenditure is the ninety-five percent of eighteen million dollars?
It's more, it's more of a function of what did you spend on construction, and that's what, can you take that?
Okay, sure. But we're not assuming that the sales tax would be the eighteen million dollars, right? Okay, that's the total.
That's the total.
Okay.
Got it. Any other questions? Okay. Are we ready?
We need to know who's breaking down to read the question.
What's? Yeah, I would entertain a motion. It's like, Mr. Allen?
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Schubert.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a resolution of intent to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds or industrial revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed eighteen million, six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Any other motion, go ahead, second to the chair.
Mr. Mayor, second.
We have a motion, second, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yonrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabata.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
So I don't think it sounds like this is entirely necessary for the project, given that demolition's already been almost completed. So I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes, six, one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item, that was for the intent on the resolution. So, and then your, Ms. Schubert, please go forward.
I'm back. So what we just did was, city council approved a resolution intent, which is the first step in the IRB process. What this item is, is actually an ordinance to approve the issuance of bonds for the Marion Grand Station. So this would be the last step of the similar process. In August of twenty twenty-two, city council approved a resolution of intent, similar to the item we just approved in the previous item, to issue taxable industrial revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed ninety-three million dollars for the residential component of Marion Grand Station. The point of issuing those bonds would also be to, for the developer to receive a sales tax exemption on the cost of their construction materials, but also in addition to receive a ten-year property tax abatement, except for that we have negotiated a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, which I will cover here in a second. That agreement, that resolution, which was number nine twenty-six, that was approved in August, almost three years ago to the day, was with Marion Grand Station LLC. Since then, Marion Grand Station LLC has been assigned to Marion Grand Lofts LLC. Same folks, same characters, just a different LLC. Again, provide property tax abatement and the sales tax on construction. Again, with our IRBs work, there will be a base lease. The residential component will be base leased to the city. We will turn around through a lease, lease it back to MG, MGS Lofts. The rent payments on that lease will be the value of the debt service over the course of the ten years to get them the abatement and the sales tax exemption. The IRBs are paid solely from lease payments and the city, again, is not obliged to pay any of that debt service that they have. This is just a mechanism in which these things all flow through. As I mentioned, this particular item, because of the property tax abatement, to mitigate some of the negative impact abating taxes would have on our taxing entity partners, meaning the school districts and Green County, the library, the salon, the community college. We have entered into a pilot agreement. Pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. So while we are abating their property taxes, they are going to pay annually, just like, they will receive a property tax bill effectively. And they will pay a base amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars a year. That will flow to all of the taxing entities as if it were a property tax. Major difference between property tax and a pilot is that property taxes are at the norm, they're based on the value of the property. But you follow the math all the way through the mill. This is just a set agreed-upon amount. This amount was the ninety-four, nineteen ninety-four base level for those properties. That is the property tax that was being produced of those because they were over in the TIF over there. So in order to keep everyone whole at the rate where they were, that was negotiated. So you will see also in your packet is that pilot agreement, initial bond, bond paperwork. All of those were developed by Jacob Lowery, bond counsel, Kutek Rock. He will be able to answer your questions, I can't. And we do, I think, Scott. Scott, we have some reps from Drake, Marion Grand Station Lofts. Over in the crowd, if you have any questions for them specifically. What approval of this, should the council approve it tonight? We'll effectively start as the abatement can start on one one twenty-six. And that's when pilot payments, so it starts in line. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Mr. Allen? Go ahead, Ms. Schubert.
In reviewing the documents, the payments are actually made to the county and the county then distributes it to the taxing entities.
For the pilot payments, yes. It functions exactly like a property tax. Yeah, except for instead of it being based on this formula, it's based on some other factor. Which, which the factor here is the ninety-four pixel.
Of course, Ms. Schubert. I see no questions. I would entertain a motion for that. Red, Ms. Haines.
First, we need to waive the customary first reading.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
So I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance issuing industrial revenue bonds for Marion Grand Station Apartments Project.
Motion, Ms. Schubert.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yonrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabata.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we've waived the first reading, so I would entertain a motion. Ms. Schubert.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance issuing industrial revenue bonds from the Marion Grand Station Apartments Project and authorizing the signing of bond documents.
Any more motion, second? Ms. Haines.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Yonrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabata.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Seven, zero.
Oh. Mr.
Seven, zero?
Seven, zero. Yes, I, I.
Did you vote no?
I voted no.
Councilmember Silvers?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, the mayor voted so.
Oh, thank you.
I wasn't voting, I'm sorry. Mr. Silver, she voted how?
Seven, zero, it should be seven, zero, yes. I can't count tonight, it's fine. There's two empty seats.
We're all good, thank you. Motion, please. Next item, we'll consider approval of orders being released for code.
I will take care of this.
Go ahead.
All right, giving to Mayor and Council. We are here once again tonight talking about our public records. So back at our last meeting on August eleventh, staff presented some proposed code changes and fee schedules to better reflect our practices and provide clear, concise expectations for public records and to help staff manage the number of record requests that come in. And for tonight, we have incorporated all those changes into ordinance form. It is ready to go. With the exception, we do have two changes that we need to make to the proposed ordinance. After we posted the packet, the city attorney noticed some language in the ordinance that needed to be changed. So on the dais, I have provided you with a redlined copy of that. And it is on pages four and five of the ordinance, which highlights the change. So the section two dash one five six two, which is procedures regarding copies of public records, states that written requests shall be made on the form provided by the record custodian and presented to the record custodian. This same language also appears in section two dash one five seven two in regard to the procedure for inspection of records. This particular sentence, both of them, kind of looks at the state statute forty-two dash two twenty B, which prohibits us from using a specific form. Now, this was not language that we were proposing. This was actually language that had been in the code since nineteen ninety-four. So this was just another one of those instances when it's good every once in a while to take a look at the code to see, you know, how things have changed, what needs to be updated, to ensure that, you know, they align with state statute as well as our operational procedures. Additionally, we would ask to go ahead and approve the fee schedule that we discussed last time. These are related to the changes to the code as well as related to recent changes to state statute as far as charging fees for records. And we are requesting that council waive the first reading. The state statute changes obviously went into effect July first. And so we would like to get it all updated to mirror the state statute. And I, any questions, happy to answer.
Questions from Ms. Haines? I see no questions. Yeah, I see that. Please go forward, sir. You have a question.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Council, or Council. The proposed ordinance makes it harder and more costly for residents to keep informed of the inner workings of their own city. You have spoken, talked before, Bob, about how transparent that we are. And it's all live, you pass this ordinance tonight, making it harder for my neighbors not to access open records that were originally created using our own tax money to start with. Thank you, please don't pass this.
Any comments out there? Well, yeah, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council waive the customary first reading of an ordinance amending chapter two, article five of the Marion Code of Ordinances.
Any more, Ms. Haines?
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Shabata.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yonrich.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Well, it was waiting, so I would entertain a motion. Ms. Haines?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve an ordinance amending chapter two, article five of the Marion Code of Ordinances and the associated changes to the twenty twenty-five fee schedule.
Do you have a motion, second, child?
Mr. Mayor, second?
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, second.
Councilmember Cozmar.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yonrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Shabata.
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, if we stay on items, I would screen for a diary on the podium for community development.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Um, council asked me to give an update on seven eleven at Antioch. Just let you know that property is owned by corporate seven. We have been working with them and code enforcement has reached out with them and met with the maintenance folks and have identified the issues that need to be addressed because they kind of could buy others. They have gone out and they have seen, they have cleaned the place up quite a bit. So we are in contact with them, working with them, make sure they stay compliant on codes. They have indicated that's providing kind of applications for the property. So they have any other questions about that, or you don't? Any questions?
No, but, yeah. For the rest of the seven eleven?
All right, there, to the air. Move.
So a little bit of data on grants. The property tax rebate that you all have, the applications that, the timeline will end on Fridays. We're shutting that down. It's been very successful. We've had a number of applications and then with disburse some rebate. A number of folks, they were the city's portion of the property tax. That's from Ohio's social program, again, my, we get the most positive feedback, people are still enjoying. Council did a lot with that. Also, regards to grants, we have just completed the five driveways. We have the driveway grant program for this year, so that is being completed. As I mentioned earlier, we have lots of permits coming out of, out of community development. And one of them that we just released, issued the class review thread at the end, it was in show, building show permit for Trader Joe's. So that is an issue. So do you have any other questions?
Any questions, Ms. Schubert?
I have a question on the grants. I was told recently that we extended the tree grant to include dicar trees. Is that true or no?
Yes, yes.
Was that in the, like, E- Marion? I don't mean, probably telling residents about that. If I may, this can.
It was in the E- Marion.
Five forty.
It was in E- Marion.
Community, well, it doesn't do that one, that's one, a little bit like a deer in headlights.
We got.
I got, I got the answer wrong there.
Good, good, good. Any other questions, any questions, Captain Darren? All right, well, let's see, next item, I guess it's July financial update.
If, if maybe, again, so our financial condition, we.
Good evening again. Uh, so our financial position remains very strong.
Turning the curtain.
Turn it again. Uh, good evening again. So our financial position remains strong through July with our expenditures being well managed halfway through the year. And our revenues are still trending above projections, which is amazing. Um, and as far as the question from last time about yearly gas tax, um, Karen Crane over tourism and economic development and I have started our deep dive. So I hope to have some sort of an assessment or an evaluation for you, uh, next month or two, just to get a knowledge of things.
Just, you know.
Yes.
Just to clarify then, so what was in the, in the action form? It's not that it's below, that it's trending below. It's, we don't even know what the answer is.
Correct.
It's tiny.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Questions, sir?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the financial items, we had the draft minutes of PC and probably our committee minutes. If I have any questions, three directors pursuing those topics. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Yeah.
Um, I've got a comment, I guess, about the planning commission minutes, and I'm just really glad to see at the very end, um, that they're still keeping an eye on the possibility. Um, and trying to push an elevated pedestrian crossing across Charm Mission Parkway between Marion Grand Station and Grand Station Market. Um, and I'm excited to see that reference that might get looked at in the CIP discussion. So.
I was actually asked that question today.
Great.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing them. Okay, I see no questions then. I don't think we have an executive session this evening, sir. Where are those for that?
Uh, just one update. Uh, idea that we are likely going to, um, put a little thought to and roll out is down at the marble shop. That the city acquired for, uh, potential creek use on Marion Drive. We have quite a bit of excess marble. We have called every marble company in town. No one wants any of it. And we are having some requests from residents that would like some of it. So we are, uh, we're gonna put our heads together. But I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna move some of it out front and maybe do like a Saturday morning. If you can call it, you can have it. But if we can't get anyone that wants it, the, um, wrecking crew is, would be happy if we hauled as, as much of it off as we could, because it'll be a little bit of a pain for them. And some of the larger stuff, they'll try to salvage, but just between carrying that stuff and people have wholesale deals, we've learned more about the marble market than we ever thought there was to know. Um, but no one wants it. And we feel like it's the, if the residents can haul it, they can have it. So I don't know. We're gonna probably push that out in social media. We'll just probably do like a Saturday morning from eight to noon. We'll just have an employee down there or two employees down there that, just to basically make sure it's safe. But basically, you haul it, you can have it type of situation if you're a resident. We're still putting some details on it. I just wanted to roll that out to council, let you know that's something that we're thinking about, uh, just so we can make it available to the residents.
Have, have you thought about, uh, possibly opening up to the businesses that are located in Marion as well or?
We called the marble businesses. We've called the stone businesses.
Business.
Well, yeah, uh, anybody Marion related, I think we would, would be fine. Yeah, we don't think we would have any issue. Our only issue is gonna be that you have to be able to haul it. We're not gonna load it for you. We're not gonna put our, our folks in harm's way. So what we're probably going to do at the early discussion stage was we'll, we'll get a couple of public works, crew members. And if two people can haul it from the back or the inside to the front, then we'll assume two people can haul it from the front to their truck. Uh, and, and because there are some large pieces that we don't, we're not gonna make available just because they're, they're dangerous and we don't people operate equipment around them. But there are some smaller pieces that two people could carry. So we're gonna make them available to residents.
See? Any questions for a circle? Nothing else? I would entertain a motion this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'll take one more.
Okay.
I move for adjourned.
There are a motion. We have a second. Ms. Redd?
Mr. Mayor, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beat this term.
I do finance. I'm happy to, yeah. I can't, I can't, you can. But I can definitely.
Okay.
Very good.
Yes, we are. And all my information is on the. So you can swipe by here.
So all, all of the directors, their.
We're all, we're all here too. So we're gonna get more on that.
Oh, I, I knew why I said that. We've done the exterior.
And because no one's on it, that's, that's great.
Yeah. In our neighborhood, there's a couple of. There's, there's a couple of. The women. Yes. She's going, she got in contact and we'll get her. We'll, we'll get her all the information. Yes. That's awesome. Yeah, we even want to get a neighbor's too, like where you're going to, like, the roundabout area and your neighbor.
Yeah, we have all sorts of grants. So if people.
All right. That was city council. Come to more of these.